Council, person's Bill Federees.
Here.
Carl Fancher.
Here.
Laurie Matee.
Here.
Robert Proudman.
Here.
Kelly Smith.
Here.
Officials Carrie Sutton.
Here.
Rich Irwin.
Here.
Mary Stuber. Diane Williams. Bill Mend.
Here.
Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are a really big crowd here tonight. Did anybody sign up for privilege of the floor?
Yes. Steve Young? Would you like to...
Hello. You're gonna come up?
Yeah, this is the new area. You have to stand near the camera, or at least near the screen. The question's right now. I'm just thinking about standing there.
Where's the X?
Don't do that. You're right there. God, absolutely. You're off-camera if that's what you want.
That's what I want.
Good.
Need a variance for setback on Robinson Road. Parcel number 209-2-5.1.
Where is that? Give more or less.
Ooh, mom's.
Okay.
That'll get it?
Yeah, it certainly does! Okay, and just a little bit detail. I mean, it doesn't sound like it'd probably be a problem, but how far back are...
I think we're gonna be like forty-five, fifty feet, because the original house was probably close to that.
Okay.
What do you think?
We've never turned one down yet.
One's back, I didn't think you would, but you never know.
No.
And Steve, have you talked to Bill and Rich about it?
Nope.
At all?
Nope.
Because usually, we get there, once we get their blessing, we can say yes.
Okay, well, it's already dry, right?
Yeah.
We have our own house.
It's been there, and you're putting it basically in the same spot?
Yeah. So I'm in basically the same spot.
Yeah. Alright, just work with those guys, and then I will have absolutely no problem with it.
Okay. So do we have a pass that can...
Contingent on Bill and Rich, both getting a look at it, and working with Steve. Then we're all good.
That's gonna hold me up? I don't like that.
Then go sit right over there and chat with them. They're both reindeer!
Anything you want to know, Rich?
So, just remind me where that is exactly on Robinson Road?
Robinson Road's probably less than a quarter mile up there. I wonder where it is. Or is it still lying there right now?
And what's sitting there now?
Nothing. There was a house there that burned.
Yep.
And then there was a trailer.
Yeah, for a while.
That's what we bought with them.
Okay.
So there's existing infrastructure.
Well, stuff that gets buried.
Yeah, they're really good.
As long as I've been around, as long as it did interfere with the neighbors, or traffic flow, or anything like that, we generally say, "Oh, that deal is out." Calling a slab or...
Slab.
Good. Perfect. You good? What about you, Bill?
Okay by me.
That's pretty easy.
That was easy.
We like easier than here.
Now you have to pay the building permit fees.
Not at all!
You take a third party house, say post data check.
That's it, I guess.
Make sure it's not in a jointing state. We want to have to travel to get the money for that.
From Nevada.
Perfect! I like that. I'll go get him money personally.
Does anybody else sign up?
Yes, Emily Carman.
Help me. Okay.
Thank you for your here.
These were each community garden update. We have a layout now. The first page is gonna be the layout. The dimensions on the bottom of the page are incorrect. They're actually, hopefully, going to be four by eight beds, twelve inches deep. The second page is what we are striving to do. This is actually, because we're from the same range child, this was my childhood 4H that just posted a couple months ago, that they're also doing a community garden. So we would like to do a flyer like this with our grand opening, have all of our sponsors listed out on the bottom, so that everybody can see who's donated. Anyone would like to donate anything, please get in touch with Jennifer or I. I do have specifics that I'm going to post later on Facebook. We have a couple sponsors that are willing to give us some material with bigger items. So we want to double-check with them, make sure that we're not gonna just get overwhelmed with donations.
You should be so loud.
I know, I know.
Alright, where can they ca... what's the telephone number or email address people can contact, since they're already... And it'll go into the minutes also.
Okay, so you can always reach out on Facebook, so our Facebook page, which is the Mount Rangers 4H Club, right?
Yep.
If you want my cellphone number, it's (518) 860-2262. I'm Emily. Do you want to give yours or not? It's up to you.
Yeah. (607) 644-7134 is my cellphone.
If you want email address, it's emilycarman2019@gmail.
Emily what? I'm so sorry.
Carman.
Emily Carman.
(2019) at gmail. It's Carmen with an egg.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep us posted.
Of course.
We'll be watching, Bill.
Hopefully, we'll have our beds booked by the end of May, so we can plant the first or second weekend in June. The kids already all planted the seeds. Our last meeting, they planted, we planted about over twenty vegetables. So all the seeds have been growing in Jamie Durkin's greenhouse. She put them in there for us to grow, so they have lots of seeds that have already grown. We were hoping some would die a little bit, so we didn't have to... But she said most of them had actually grown, and we have to repot them this week, because our garden's not ready yet, so...
You can give it too many, I can kill it, no problem at all. Been doing it for years!
She's like, "I need you kids, some of the kids to take them home." I'm like, "Well, plants don't survive at my house, so I don't believe that idea." So we should have lots of vegetables.
And there was some talk about a fence?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're...
Because you're just feeding the deer, if you don't put up...
Of course, yeah. We're still going on about different ideas for that, so it's removable.
Okay, well, good. I'm excited about it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Anybody else sign up for privilege of the floor? Okay, moving along, then. We have the minutes, which you guys were sent on Friday from last month's meeting. I think Koff is here. If anybody has no objection, or they do have objection, say something. If not, make a motion to those booths, and so we can move along.
I'll make the motion.
I'll start one. Yeah, but motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. The assessor's report. Actually, I think she's in the hall. No, she left.
Okay. Dear Town Board, good evening. A very busy April. I spent a lot of time on the road visiting properties. Some of these were building permits that Mr. Irwin has provided to me from this last year, and others from the past that were needing to be updated on the rolls as work was completed. A total of eighty-five change notices went out in the mail on May 4th. Summer exemption change notices. Tentative rolls are filed and available for anyone to look at with the town clerk or during the hours that I will be available. Those hours are: May 9th, 4 to 8; 10th, 10 to 2; and the 14th, 1:30 to 5:30; the 17th, 10 to 2. They're also available at the county website. More assessment reviews scheduled for June 6th from 5 to 9 p.m. Anyone can file a grievance for the board to review. The forms are available in my office or online at www.tech.ny.gov. The applications must be submitted to the assessor's office three days prior to June 6th to be heard on that date. If submitted later than June 3rd, hearing the complaint may be adjourned to a later date. I will always recommend an owner contact me first, so we can discuss their concerns. I have submitted a voucher for mileage reimbursement for travel expenses for April. Mary Stuber.
Need a motion to accept the assessor's report? I'll make that. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Okay. Code enforcement report.
Quick update on some of the incomplete files that we had. There are no longer any incomplete files. I guess that's the update. They've all been turned into either closed files, open and active files, or I've started enforcement proceedings to turn them into one of the two. We've had, we have a total of thirty-nine open permits right now. Two expired, which people have been notified, so just waiting for a response of some sort. We had five new open, five new building permits opened this past month. A certificate of occupancy, one of compliance, couple renewals, a bunch of site visits, and, let's see, two compliance orders and one stop order. And the phone is definitely picking up. It is definitely construction. It could be.
Motion to accept the code enforcement officer's report? I'll make it. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Have a court, have a sentence report.
So this week, or this week, this month, we had three dog license renewals that were processed so far. As far as the sewer district, we're up to twenty-five accounts that have been fully paid, and there's still sixteen outstanding. And so far, five accounts in the water district are fully paid up for the year. The NYMRC did come by last Monday, and he met with Highway Super and myself, and provided a list of recommendations that the insurance company would be interested in seeing us follow through somewhere for the town hall, somewhere for the highway gorilla, somewhere for the park. So if you have any questions on that, I can back you up.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept that.
A second.
Carl's seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Now, she's Diane. Did she leave her report?
She did. Let's see. There are... Total paid as of right now is $1,512,262. That $2,746.37 were penalties. Penalties for April were $738.19. And there is still $253,848.83 unpaid.
And she'll be collecting through the end of May, I think, and then the county will take it from there. But any penalty or that's assessed goes to the town, so... Your bill now.
She said she did mail out one hundred and eighty-eight late notices, so...
Sounds like a lot, but that's pretty typical for an average year. Yeah. I'll tell you what, you can go to Scarry County, we only collect about eighty-two percent of our taxes. It's one of the worst mistakes. Okay, a motion to accept the tax, town tax collector's report. I'll make the motion. We have the motion from Carl. Second from Laurie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Sewer District Operator's Report, fast.
This month, there was an average daily flow rate of 3,682 gallons a day. They've made arrangements to jet the Bull Hill Road section of the collection system with a septic caller on Monday, May 16. They will be doing a camera inspection of the Bull Hill Road section before and after jetting. Contractors have been onsite working on the final punch list for the projects below where some of the items that have been addressed. The building does now have fire extinguishers, and they have been mounted to the walls. The gaps between the walls and the conduit are going through the ceiling have been filled. The broken piece of trim has been replaced and secured. Cracks in the concrete apron in the front of the garage door have been filled in. Please note that this is not a complete list of items that are on the punch list, nor is the complete list of things fixed yet. There will be an update when more things have been completed, and please reach out if you have any questions.
You may have noticed the road work is done. They did it in a fairly fast fashion when they finally got started because of the weather. Looks pretty good, but that created a couple of other problems along, you know, feathering out through the driveways and things like that. We're working our way through that. So, anyway, a motion to accept the sewer district operator's report.
I'll make it.
We have the motion, we have the second.
Second.
Second from Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Historian's report.
Alright, I didn't write anything official, but I have lots of things to talk about.
Go for it.
So, for the past, I think, three months or so, since I've been historian, there have been a lot of things happening. Lot of phone calls, which quite frankly, I was surprised at. I didn't expect so many, but it's been fun. Lots of people asking about property history. I think I've had three or four of those. I did an environmental site report for an engineer about the history of the location, and I've done several genealogical research pieces for different people. In addition to, I published a newsletter, which I think Bill, you shared it the last meeting I was in here, and I'm active on social media. But the most exciting part is the creation of our Consville Historical Society, which I am also president of, and my vice president is Carrie over there, and my secretary is Erica, and my coworker is Laurie Justin. So we are super excited, and we have now met twice. And we are making plans to secure funding to restore the Couchman House that the town is in the process of securing the site for. And we hope to use part of that as a museum for all of the items and documents that we collect, and we'd like to be able to share those with the community. In addition, we're working on creating some programs for the future. And we hope, short-term, that the town will approve us as sort of an arm of the town until we get our official status through the state, so that we can open a bank account, begin collecting members, and engaging in some of the fun activities we have planned. So we are seeking members for that. This is a good forum for that. An application will be forthcoming, but our email address is consvillhistoricalsociety@gmail.com. And I'm always available to answer any questions anybody has, or to give resources for either the town in history or the historical society.
Thank you. And we're all, those of us who've already joined are really excited. I think we have a good group. And I think there's a lot, a lot of different things to do, so we'll have to pick out, you know, I'm just a member, just like everybody else, but we have...
We're prioritizing what we...
Yes, but one of the main things we'll have to do is hire an engineer.
Yes.
We'll want to know what needs to be done, what needs to be brought up, things like that.
Yeah.
That's probably, at least on my list, is representing the town, what we need to do.
Right. Yeah.
From my layman's eye, it's built, it's solid. I'm sure there's some things that are behind the scenes are not evident that we probably will have to take up. Yours? Yep.
Yes. It's a, I think this is a great opportunity for our town.
Right, and I've got a few things I'm gonna continue saying later on in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept this lawyer's report. There's Bob and then Laurie. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Highway Super's report. Bill!
Okay, this is, I'm gonna try to be brief, but this has a lot of legs. And I'm gonna, Carrie, I'm gonna divert a little bit from my submitted report. We have replaced several culverts throughout town. Now that the weather seems to be cooperating as, three weeks ago, as you know, we had ten inches of snow on the ground. One large culvert was replaced at the bottom of 906 South Mountain Road, and another one was replaced on Robinson Road. The South Mountain Road homeowner, they were very, very happy about the work we did there. All the paved roads were swept during the month of April, and there was a continuing effort to repair potholes through town. A new debris tarp has been installed on Truck 201 in preparation to begin hot patch repairing of some of the paved roads, which we will actually start doing tomorrow on Durham Road. We have a guy going down to Peckham's in Catskill, he's gonna get a load of hot mix, and we're gonna start redoing, not redoing, we're gonna start hot patching Durham Road, and hopefully continuing to work from there. That's tomorrow. Our pavement roller, which, there'll be more on this one, was sent out for repair, and we've gotten it back in time to start paving. We usually, we use that mostly on dirt roads. The road department has an August 1st date with the Gorman Group to start tading South Mountain Road north of where they stopped last year, which is approximately a quarter mile north of Lost Mountain Road. And we're gonna go, I'm hoping a mile and a quarter, maybe a mile and a half, depending upon the CHIPS funding, and so on and so forth. I've also been getting crusher run delivered for that project. I have quotes for material for five other dirt roads. Those quotes came from Cobbleskill Stone. Those roads obviously are in bad need of repair. And in my, in my report, I have, I also need to hear from the board about bids. I received to make some basic safety repairs to the highway building. I started bidding out gutter and downspout work for the building. The bids were coming in, as everybody knows, you can't get people to do stuff. So the bids came in for the gutter work, and we've settled in on that, and I'm waiting for some more information back on two doors and an awning over the back door where ice is falling on you as you walk into the building. So we're waiting to get that fixed. So that's actually gonna be a separate procedure. I've gotten the okay from the town as far as the gutters and the downspouts. And this is, this needs to be done, it's obviously not in emergency, especially with the cold weather that's gone now. So again, tomorrow, we're gonna start hot patching Durham Road. I need a feel from the board about the pavement roller that we have. We can't afford to buy a used one, which I had gotten prices on, and I found out Friday and today that the motor on the one we have, it's a DD-110 Ingersoll Rand dual drum pavement roller. We need the four-cylinder motor, diesel motor in it. We need to get a rebuilt motor for it. Probably motor and installation, we're talking about $6,000. I need a pavement roller to do my dirt roads. I can't do dirt roads without a pavement roller. Not necessarily using it on the paved roads. But I need a feel from the board about how, about where they want to go on this. A new-used is around fifty grand. So Bill told me to bring it up, we could mow it around a little bit. I've gotten prices on diesel motor. The diesel motor's around $4,000, and installation, changeover, blah, 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 is probably gonna be two to three grand. I just need you to start thinking about that, because it's something we need. And if we're gonna start fixing the dirt roads, I need this piece of equipment.
How long is it gonna take from the time you give the okay, if you give it?
I would say, I didn't, I didn't call the company about ordering the motor, but I got the impression that this is an item they have in stock, and we could probably switch it over. I would say, given the okay, I could say we could have the thing switched over in a month. Because you get the motor, it's a long lock, it's called, it's a stock motor. You have to put the injection pump on, you have to put all the oil filter equipment on, you have to do all the plumbing, and so on and so forth. So it's not just a strict flip-over of motor, you have to add stuff to it.
Would you gonna do that yourself, or would you gonna have Anderson do it?
Probably not gonna have Anderson do it, because it's gonna cost us $1,000 to run it there and run it back. I'm gonna try to have it done in-house. Otherwise, it's gonna be pretty expensive.
So you had somebody come and do it in-house?
Yes.
Once you get into that a little bit.
Yes.
Who would you gonna have come do it?
Bruce.
Oh. You know Eric, right?
Yeah. Bruce has already been there, he's willing to do it. He will do it on location basis, which I think is optimum for us, because for us to bring that thing somewhere is gonna cost us a lot of money. And if I can avoid that expense, I'd like to. So I mean, obviously, you know, the decision's up to you guys.
What kind of shape is the rest of the water in?
The rest of it's not bad. We don't need the water system, because it's dirt roads. So you need the, you need the physical machine working. That's what you need. And again, a new-used one, I priced them out, a new-used one is over $50,000. And this one actually was running until, until we discovered that the motor had blown. It was actually running. So I'm kinda between a rock and a hard place here, and again, I just need, at some point, I need some feedback from you guys.
Is that why you was down here with us the other day?
That's why we were down there with you the other day. And that, that streak of oil all the way down to Corman Equipment is our water.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't.
Okay, no, it wasn't. So, so you, I know, I know Bob, you've seen the evidence of the machine broke down. So it just comped out, so...
Yeah, David yelled at me.
Yeah, I spoke to him for that. So, so that's the story with that. At some point, I need some, some feedback from you. I'm kind of, and this is just today, I'm kind of not in a bad spot to follow up on this, but again, if you guys could, you know, help me out with this, I appreciate it. And so, and then I have a third thing that Bill asked me to read into the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's an issue on a road, a dirt road in town, and it's not uncommon, but it's, it's something that seems to be a bone of contention for a lot of homeowners. And it's the status of a town equipment turnaround. So I'm going around and around with a resident about the town equipment turnaround, and he's claiming ownership to his private portion of the town equipment turnaround. He has, he has obstructed his portion of the town equipment turnaround, and he has actually threatened to me that he's going to hire an excavator and dig it out. So obviously, the town equipment turnaround is important for snowplows. It's important for any trailer that goes up there and has to turn around. And so I had to do some research on this, and I contacted Bill, and we've, I believe Bill has mentioned this to the town attorney.
Several times.
Yes. And so, went a little further, and I grabbed Gary Thorington, who's the supervisor down in Wyndham, and I called Jason Wayman, who's the supervisor down in, over in Broome, who had a lot of dirt roads. And Jason gave me the phone number of a young fella in Cornell Local Roads, and that's, that's the big kahuna of New York State roads. And this guy came back to me with a, I explained to him what my problem was. I'm not gonna read you what, what I sent him, but he came back to me with a fantastic answer. And so, in light of that, I would just like to recognize Jeffrey Scott of the Cornell Local Roads. It's a state organization, and they, and they reach out to departments in towns like us who are having these particular problems. So he says, "Good evening, Mr. Wayman. From the description, I am assuming that this is a road by use which is covered in Highway Law 189. And this information is gonna be, this information is good when I'm long gone moving forward, because, because this is gonna happen again. This means that the portion of the road that has been in use for more than ten years, regardless if it is within the confines of private property, is considered a portion of the town's roadway. And being considered, being considered a portion of the town's roadway, you cannot obstruct it. If a road has been in use by the town in excess of ten years, it is assumed the owner has given an undeclared permission. This access right would transfer from owner to owner. Within those ten years, the town must have made some level of maintenance to the road, which we have, which could include the shoulders and the adjacent ditches. The limit of a road by use reaches to the extent that the town has maintained." This is further discussed in our workshop manual, Powers and Duties of Local Highways, and he's actually sending me that booklet. And then there's a deeded right-of-way road, which this is not, because I was up in the county, and they said there's no deeds to that road. This is outside of deed, this would not apply. To determine if the road is deeded right-of-way, you would need to find documentation of its dedication at a county clerk's office. And Highway Law 319 also gives you some authority to move obstructions from the roadway, which sounds like what is also happening in this case, and he cites Powers and Duties manuals that the supervisor should have. So the town has, has a right to make... So um, um, the town uh, has, has a right to maintain that, that turnaround. Um, Bill and I are going to come to a reasonable solution with this. And I just thought that this was important because this is gonna come up again. And I know that this, this turnaround has been in use for at least ten years cause I moved here twenty years ago and that, and it was there. And in fact, kinda funny, the no parking town turnaround sign has a bullet hole in it. I was, I remember myself laughing at this sign, you know? So, so this definitely applies to us and I think it's important that, that this law is understood by the, by the town in case they run into this again. So this is the other thing I'm working on.
We've spent a lot of time on it because this person is probably not gonna take no for an answer.
Probably not.
Is he a new owner?
What's that?
A new property owner or is that a?
He's not. Three years he bought it from, well, I don't wanna say the name, but then you'll know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm.
But he, he bought it from a longstanding resident.
How many people live on the road in your question?
I don't know. Five full timers.
Yeah. I already know what color it is. Just by the way you're talking.
Excuse me?
Just by the way you're talking, I could figure it out.
Yeah, and it's.
Track with the bullet hole.
That's.
Turnaround, you know, as I can remember.
And it's not.
Nineteen seventies it was a turnaround.
And we're trying to come to a.
I used to build there a new building.
We're trying to come to a satisfactory conclusion, but I, I've done a lot, I've spent a lot of time on this. And this guy down in uh, local, uh Cornell Local Roads hit the nail right on the head. And it almost seems like a narrative that he's had to email a lot of people. So, so anyway, that's my report.
All right, thank you. Um, let's go back to the roller. Bill needs this, but do you wanna have more time to think about it or talk about it, but? I just wanna make sure we don't sink the money into a, a motor and have something else puke on it. And then, never any guarantee.
I know.
For fifty grand, we don't have. Not after we bought the truck for seventy-five.
That was my next question.
And we have it, but then we'll have to take it out of something else like.
And if that's not, that's another used piece of equipment at fifty grand.
Right.
We, we might be buying a problem worse than the one we have, yeah.
To, to, to rent a, a roller the size of what we need would probably cost us several, summer let's say, would probably cost us several thousand dollars. And then, and then if we fix this piece of equipment, we can babysit it, I had to go to Lathan to get it, uh, radiator hose for it, you know, stuff like that is okay. Um, but just even to rent one or lease one for the summer is gonna cost us several thousand dollars. So it's nice to have a piece of equipment there. We're on our way to getting it fixed and um, this is not the first motor that I had to replace in a piece, in a, in a, in a piece of construction equipment.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
And Bob will?
I'll find a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Thank you.
You bought that roller, did you?
No.
Oh, you didn't buy that? You mean that was before you?
Can't be that old, but I didn't want to say. It's a '06, it's a '06 motor.
It's not that old. All right. Uh, Supervisor's County Report, my favorite subject, but this is actually pretty good. I'll, I'll get it short.
Before you jump onto that one, do we approve Bill's report? Oh, yeah. It is approved by in the.
Oh, yeah, it was.
I'll make, I'll make the, uh, I'll make the motion we approve Bill's report.
Okay, I'll second it. We have a second. All that was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove.
There you go.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Um, okay. You know, I like to talk about renewable energy, but it is something that's getting a lot more serious. You probably remember, and I doubt you do, but um, the state imposed upon locality is a whole different methodology for assessing renewable energy bodies, which is primarily wind and solar. I mean, like in the case of Old Sharon, it was an eighty-four percent discount off the assessment. So taxes went from like two point four million to like four hundred thousand or something like, which is outrageous that the state would do that on the backs of the, uh, the local municipalities. So, um, our um, Energy Chairman, we have an Energy Chairman from the Board of Supervisors, really good, Don Airy from the Town of Glen. He started working with an attorney that doesn't get involved in anything but assessments on utilities and energy-driven type of things. Well, I'm gonna cut to the chase. The, some of the things they did were uncoupled, in our view, in our attorney's view, was are unconstitutional. They, they took away home rule. They uh, didn't make any provision for lost taxes, all in the name of getting all this energy, by the way, we're not gonna get one kilo lot of, it's all going down to New York City or down south. We'll have the benefit of looking at this stuff, no jobs. So, they filed in court, New York State Supreme Court, which is not our highest court, by the way, it's our lowest state court. I, I never understood that, but uh, it's true. So anyway, went before the judge, the judge was a political appointee, uh, fairly new and don't tell me there's no politics. But the judge held in favor of the nine Skahari County towns, including ours and some private citizens, to issue a temporary restraining order telling the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance cease and desist until they could prove that they were doing everything right. And if proper laws followed, they aren't doing anything right. So this went out about two days before the books were supposed to close on all the assessments for the year. Which means they all diverted back to what they're worth. So the state is really perturbed in Skahari County and the nine towns. Good, good. So um, uh, we're going back to court starting May twenty-seventh. And our case is good, but you know, it's not always much the cases, the lawyers that you have. So, and there's already a lot of special interests, meaning the renewable energy companies, that are poking their nose and they're trying to foil our records, foil, they have no standing, they're not mentioned. And this isn't just Skahari County, this is for the whole state. Whether you're in Long Island, Buffalo, what we did here in Skahari County applies. So it's pretty exciting stuff. We're getting calls from other counties that wanna hook up with us. They can hook up, but they have to kick in a little bit for the legal fees. We're all by ourselves on this, but more, more power to us if we're in a bigger group than just a little Skahari County. So this is exciting stuff. We kinda thought it was a long shot, not because our case wasn't, wasn't any good, it was because the politics of it. It's this mad rush to green energy, which I'm not saying is a bad thing, but do it right, cause they're never gonna meet it. It's just impossible to meet it in the timeframe that they wanna do it. So, and we also got a few, I got one, somebody else got one from somebody in the, what they call the second floor of the Executive Chamber, somebody that works for the governor, asking questions, I just referred them to our attorney. So, anyway, that's my report. There's other stuff going on, but um, I think this'll do. So can we get a motion to accept the Supervisor's County Report?
Make a motion?
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So, Captain. All right. The you have a copy or you were sent a copy, I believe, of the March Supervisory Report? And that's a budget statement through March thirty-first? When I sent that email out, I attached the link to it.
Yes, I didn't look at it.
Okay, but you, you wrote the. You said you didn't look at it, we got a problem.
No, I didn't see it.
Okay. So anybody have any thoughts? You wanna look at it and come back to it if you haven't seen it? Would like to get this on the books. It's nothing really extraordinary, we're in good shape.
I wrote it, I'll make a motion to accept it.
One second. All those in favor, say aye.
What's a question?
What's that?
I'd like to ask the question of that gentleman, I guess listening to him. You've ever noticed when you look at the end of Shell Pit Road, there's a great big hole underneath it and none of the water ever comes out the other end?
Shell Pit Road, up, up further by turnaround or?
East Conesville Road, there's a great big thing. I was, I, it almost killed one of the fire chiefs. Uh, Mr. Robinson next door tried to blow it out and when it come back, he took quite a beating. I knew, I was, I was with him. I rolled out of the road. I'm not as big as he is. There's a, a great big hole on one side and no water runs down the other side. And these older people, which is all we have in, in, up in that development, there's all kinds of water rushing out on this side and it washes it out. You've done a great job of fixing it within the last week.
I know, the guys were up there, just give me, just give me a better.
Don't you think that sometimes somebody should open that damn great big thing? I know who was Tybus Superintendent, I've lived through all of this.
Is, is that the culvert, the big culvert that goes from the pond, right there by your driveway, Joey?
We couldn't get Joey Thompson to walk the right, or slide through it. And he was the skinniest guy they had. But they certainly should. Look at that, you're getting, every time you get a heavy storm, it washes out.
Okay, okay.
What they call horseshoe look.
Time out. We were up there the other day, we put, we put a piece of drain in the road because we got a complaint that there was literally water coming up out of the road and running down the road, so we fixed that. Give me a better description of what exactly you're talking about.
Exactly where you come down, that drain pipe that goes across the road, that's facing up the hill.
That's not helping you.
Inside, it, it doesn't exist. No water goes out of it.
Okay, how far up from?
Is that right on the corner?
It's right underneath the road.
You are, you are.
By your, just before.
Right, and it's on my side of the road.
Can you help me out here?
Yeah, it's where the, where the lake is or the pond. It's right there on that corner and there's the house over here.
So.
And, and Shell Pit Road, it's right there on the corner.
Is it Shell Pit and East Conesville, is it Horseshoe Road and Shell Pit?
East Conesville.
East Conesville Road and?
Shell.
At the corner of.
And Shell Pit, okay, so I know they were up there the other day, so you, what do you need there?
That culvert, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry? A new culvert? A new culvert? And, and you also need, it makes, if I'm not wrong, and we looked this up one time, and Mr. Ro, uh, you referred the big lawyer down the scene, Bill Cullen, he looked it up. The, when you have a, a road like that, half the water has to go down each side. You can't just put it all on my side.
Okay.
I think that's a law.
If it's geographically possible.
And that's, there's a lot of older people up there.
Okay.
And women drive just as well as men, I'm not arguing women and men. You should do that so we don't have one of those elderly ladies down there like my wife wound up when she was like down in front of our driveway when the culvert went.
Okay, so I'm gonna get somebody up there on Wednesday to show me exactly what you're talking about. And we will do our best to take care of it.
I think it might save the life.
Uh, that's fine, but, but I can't do tomorrow.
I'm hard to break a bone when you're my age. I, I've done a beautiful job on my hip. And, and I only went down three feet. And I'm still abstained on this.
Well, we'll take a look at that on Wednesday and Bobby, you think you could show me exactly what we're talking about here?
Yeah, I believe in the, the culvert that I'm thinking.
David just walked away from it. I knew it, I knew Tybus Superintendent, I'm not afraid of that.
No, no, but you don't have to.
Wait, wait.
Bill is here, Bill will work on it.
There's two Davids, there's a David Porter and then there's a David Gleach.
Dave Merlin was Superintendent.
All right, all right.
Before Steve.
All right, all right, Dewey, you're welcome.
Now, if one of those older ladies, or male, comes out of that thing when the, before you fix the road and they get down that three or four feet, they could die.
All right, thank you, thank you. We'll do our best on that.
Okay, thank you Dewey. Moving along, we have a, a budget resolution for a couple of handful of amendments. One of them involves the money that we got from the JCAP grant for the, for the, for instance, I'll talk about that in a while. The money that Jamie got, so that has to be added to the budget as income, which is a nice thing. And then you have to account where it's going. I added it to the town hall contractual. The majority of that work will be town, fall into town hall contractual. So, and the other ones are just little house cleaning stuff.
Would you like a roll call on that?
Yes. I just wanted to see if anybody's got any comments or questions. By the silence, I'll assume no.
Phil Fettere?
Yes.
Carl Granger?
Aye.
Robert Crowman?
Aye.
Kelly Smith?
Aye.
Laurel Matice?
Aye.
Thank you. We already talked about the Bull Hill Road and nine ninety B paving, so I'm not gonna go into that. As Ken was talking about the Historical Society, uh, again, not much to add to that. I think a little bit is that, you know, obviously the town will be the owners of the place. But we're looking forward to a good relationship with the Historical Society. I mean, we're all so motivated to, to maybe make use of that space for town business. I think the place will be big enough at its most that we can do both. So, I'm all psyched up about it and I think a lot of other people are too. Do you wanna add anything to that? Harry, Erica, other members?
I'm excited.
Okay. Which is a nice segue into the Coachman Couchman, I, you know, like a couple of times it did spell check, I'm like,
Yes.
I get Coachman instead of Couchman. Um, but anyway, um, we're all set on what it would cost. Worked that out with the county treasurer and I think we're doing, we did very well, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents, which was um, back due taxes and penalties. And she didn't even wanna ask us, pretty interesting. So I'm pretty excited about that. We're getting a very good deal. That doesn't mean we don't have work ahead of us. And some of the things that we talked about at the meeting, Historical Society before this was how to raise some funds and, and maybe some potential grants that have been coming our way. Obviously though, there are some things that will lead to address and it is a town building, so we'll have to find some, some way to take care of this. But this is as uh, uh, former president of the Skahari County Historical Society, Mike West, who's also our town attorney, said, "This is a chance of a lifetime. You can't, you can't pass it up." So let's look, we're going to, not to, we're, we're going to not pass it up. So, all right. And by the way, the lot is a lot bigger than I thought it was. It goes almost all the way over Kilburn's old house and Vernon Bailey's house. So we need a.
It's like a, if, if there's like a foot between the end of Vernon Bailey's driveway and where that land goes to.
I never realized.
That whole field next to it's all.
Yes, there's quite a big area on the one side there.
Yeah, so probably next month I'm gonna come to the board and say we need to start cutting that grass and we'll work out something with it.
I have nothing today.
Yeah. I appreciate the fact that Eric did it on his own for several, multiple years. Um, but we do have a resolution that we have to pass. But before we do that, for some of the folks that thought maybe that there was something a little bit untoward about how this went down, we're going to just cover it. And I'd like to see it in the minutes if we could, please. Last meeting in second Monday of April, whatever that was. Um, we went into executive session to discuss a, um, a potential contract negotiation, which is perfectly acceptable under the New York State Open Meetings Law. You're not gonna discuss a negotiating strategy in public, so you're the person sitting across the table from you the next day knows exactly what your strategy is. I know it was the county, but we didn't know which box they were gonna come out of because it was valued at about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, and they're doing us a solid by giving it to us for this price and I have to thank our treasurer, Mary Ann Waller, for doing that. Um, so I was authorized by the board to go sit down, talk to the, uh, first talk to the Finance Committee, which I did in person. Gave them a letter of request, asked them to consider it. The Finance Committee unanimously agreed to it. Ended up the, the. Then the, the, what they, what they agreed to was that we could, they'd be willing to give it to us at a price negotiated with the treasurer. Two days later, it went to the full board and that passed unanimously. So for anybody who makes the remark that this was done on the sly, like somebody said, or this was done secretly, no. Or somebody that wanted the property, and that's okay, I don't blame them for wanting it. Doesn't mean that they have first dibs on it or we have to defer to them. That's not what this is about. This is about what's good for the town of Consville. So I, we didn't do anything wrong and I'm sorry if somebody feels that way. Not really. Anyway, we do have the resolution. I don't really like to read them, but I do want to read this one because it's important. And, and then explain what's on the last page then, which is part of the process. So if we could read that, please?
Resolution subject to permissive referendum allowing town of Consville to acquire house and lands and improvements known as the Couchman House from the county of Skahery. At a meeting of the town board in town of Consville held at the town hall in the town of Consville, Skahery County, New York on the ninth day of May, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock in the evening. There were present William Federice, Robert Crowman, Carl Fancher, Kelly Smith.
I didn't do that. Mike West, I'm gonna throw Mike under the bus. He did it. We'll fix that, don't worry. Yeah. We threw you off.
You did. They operated the following resolution and moved its adoption seconded by the following. Whereas the town board has determined that there is a public need for the acquisition of the house and improvements known as the Couchman House on the one point two six acres of land, more or less identified by the Skahery County Tax Map Number two zero nine, Tech three, Tech eighteen, and situated at twelve seventy-nine, State Route nine ninety V in the town of Consville, Skahery County, New York. From the county of Skahery, here and after referred to as the county, said acquisition having been determined to be in the best interest of the town for many reasons, including but not limited to the following. House has historical significance to both the town and county, so preservation of this historical treasure will be of a great benefit to the community. Said property being the site for locating of historic records and artifacts and location for other town functions. And whereas pursuant to agreement between town and county, the parties have determined that the cost of the acquisition shall be no more than twenty-one thousand dollars. The source of funds for purchase will be from the town reserves. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved and determined that pursuant to the provisions of section sixty-four, two ninety and ninety-one of the town law and all such other laws as are applicable to the purchase and acquisition of properties by a town, the town board of the town of Consville does hereby determine that there is a need and a purpose in the town of Consville for acquiring this property, which will promote the health, safety and welfare of the town, its citizens and the community. The town supervisor and/or his successors are hereby authorized to acquire by deed said property from the county for a price not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars and upon such other terms and conditions, the town attorney and the town board determine to be reasonable and necessary and be it further resolved and determined that pursuant to section eighty-one, eighty-two and ninety of the town law, that within ten days from the date of passage of this resolution, the town clerk shall post and publish a notice which shall set forth the date of adoption of this resolution, shall contain an abstract of such resolution concisely setting forth the purpose and effect thereof, shall specify the resolution in the newspaper to, with the Mountain Eagle, a newspaper published in Skahery County and/or having general circulation in the town of Consville. And in addition thereto, that the town clerk shall post or cause to post on a signboard of the town of Consville, a copy of such notice within ten days after the date of the adoption of the resolution.
Can you just read that last page with the one paragraph, please?
Sure. Notice is hereby given to the town board of the town of Consville, Skahery County, New York at a regular meeting of the town board held on the ninth day of May. Duly adopted a resolution, an abstract of which is as follows. A resolution providing that the subject to a permissive referendum, the town of Consville intends to purchase a house and lands with all improvements known as the Couchman House situated at one, or twelve seventy-nine, State Route nine ninety V in the town of Consville, Skahery County, New York from the county of Skahery for a purchase price not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. The full text of this resolution may be procured by contacting the town clerk at her office as set forth herein, dated May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. What that means is before we discuss and or vote on the, the resolution, just like we had with the place next door when we sold it, any transaction of real estate by a town is subject to permissive referendum. What does that mean? That means within a period, I believe it's twenty-five or thirty days. I don't have that with me, but we'll keep talking. The, the way the law is written, you have to have five percent, as it applies to account our size, you have to have five percent of the number of voters, currently registered voters, who, and five percent of the number of people that voted for governor in the last election. So if there was two hundred and fifty people that voted, you'd have to have five percent of that. Or twenty-five persons, which is what we would be, sign a petition saying they wanted to go to a permissive referendum. And frankly, it could happen, but I have my doubts. But if it does, I'm sure the vast majority of people in this town want that to happen. But that's the process, so of course we'll follow it. So we, we have to pass this resolution and then if nobody comes forward in thirty days with bona fide registered voters decided, you just can't go to the country store and say, hey, would you sign this for me, please? There is a process. Then we can proceed with the closing, which shouldn't take that long. Is it just a quick, quick claim deed on these things? So. That said, I'd like to be the one, if you guys know my, offering the resolution. If somebody wants to second it.
I'll second.
And Lori haven't lived there, seconds it.
Well, I think we need a roll call.
Yeah, no, they're making the, you have to make the resolution, the first and the second, then we're gonna do a roll call.
Got it.
Yes. So now we're all called.
Twenty seconds later. William Federice?
Aye.
Robert Crowman?
Aye.
Carl Fancher?
Aye.
Kelly Smith?
Aye.
Laura Mathais?
Mathais.
Mathais, sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. I mean, this is the first step. There's, there's a lot of work yet to be done. We'll need just tomorrow morning when I go to the county.
Don't forget my survey.
What's that?
I have a survey waiting for you on the desktop.
Oh, thank you, thank you for reminding me. Just let it go back. We're talking about the Couchman House and I, I did make a note here, but I didn't bring it up before. And I think I did tell you guys when I sent you the email on Friday. In the early, they, they, within the bylaws, there's supposed to be a, what is it, the Board of Trustees or something like that? Sort of like an oversight of the, of the, the board in the full, sort of like an audit. They don't have enough members to have enough people overseeing the, the officers on what they do. So the suggestion is, and I, I think it's not a bad idea, there's no real heavy lifting involved. It's not our money being spent, but that we assume that role until they can get enough people to take that over. So I, 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 I guess it would hurt to have a motion on it.
Yeah, I'll make the motion if we do that.
Okay, one second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, some kind? You know what it reminds me of? The fire department in the fire district. There's certain things that the fire district would tell the fire department sometimes. You can't do that. Then we'll fight with them. You know, I, um, you got on both sides. Yeah. Okay. Don't have anything real new to talk about with the J.CAP, that's Justice Court, and I don't know what the AP is. Grant update. Except for one thing of note, we did get a contractor who's gonna come in and start painting the floors and the walls in this room and the supervisor slash bookkeeper's office, the assessor's office, and the restroom, as well as the corridor going down the hallway here. And they're gonna start on Saturday the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, the twenty-first and they have to be done by close of business on Monday the twenty-third. They will handle moving the furniture. As I was saying to Carrie and say to, I already know, say this to the people that occupy the other offices, if there's anything loose there that you don't want lying around, you're afraid it's gonna get misplaced or something, you might want to box it up before then. If you're comfortable with it, just moving the furniture, they're just gonna move the furniture away from the wall so they can get to it, so it's, that's it. We have a contractor for the floor, but we're still working on a date, which can't come anyway until after the walls are done. And then there's some carpentry work that has to be done on the judge's bench, but I'm not worried about that. It's not a big job. So that was more of a point of information. Highway services update. I haven't done much with that. That was seeing if there's any shared services opportunities and frankly, I just haven't had the time to be absolutely honest about it. Now, we do have a sewer district application, which is the first that we've had since we started the district and this is for a new connection. It's Walt Carmen. It's for a house he's putting up for his son. You probably noticed the, the new place that he put up, I think it was last year. He's got a couple of those big buses that he likes to play around with and work on. He's putting a house up for his son behind there and they've already done some site work. No trees or anything, so not a lot of work. Under the sewer law that we passed, any new installations are subject to approval by the board with a couple of considerations. Do we have the capacity? And I'll tell you what, we're up to like thirty-six hundred. We have, I believe it's fourteen thousand gallons per day is what our capacity is. Plenty of room for growth, so that's not an issue. But because of that and the work that goes with it, there's a twenty-five hundred dollar fee, which the Carmans are well aware of and have no problem with. Also, they would pay any expenses associated with the installation in terms of equipment, labor and materials. A lot of that, they're going to be doing themselves with the careful eye of the Consville, West Consville wastewater facility operator who works for Lamont, Travis Castle. And Rich is going to make sure that they're doing everything within the code. And the gentleman that's going to be doing most of the work, I have a lot of faith in will do a fine job. Walt. So what, what the first step to this is to approve the, the connection to the, we could read this if you want. We can make a motion at the expense of the reading. All right, I don't care anymore. Could you read it, please?
I don't know if I have it.
Really?
She might have just taken her entire. Let me see real quick. It's in the back of this. Uh, hold on. Yeah, I got it.
Okay. It's two pages, but they're two short pages.
Resolution of twenty twenty-two, the Consville Town Board approving an application to allow a new connection to the West Consville Sewer District. Whereas pursuant to article thirteen, section thirteen oh one A of the town of Consville Sewer Use Law, SOL, the town board is responsible for approval of allocation of sewage capacity for any newer expended connections and whereas the town board has received an application for sewage capacity for a home located at tax lot two oh nine dot dash one dash ten dot two three, applicant's property. And whereas section thirteen oh one A of the SOL requires applicants for new sewer connections to obtain an allocation of sewer capacity from the town board and now therefore be it resolved that, one, the town board of the town of Consville hereby provides approval of the allocation of sewage capacity for the applicant's property pursuant to article thirteen of the town of Consville Sewer Use Law. And two, the applicant must obtain all other approvals for the contemplated single family home and three, the approval is contingent upon the applicant timely submitting a special benefit assessment fee of twenty-five hundred dollars and agreeing to the payment of any actual expenses incurred by the West Consville Sewer District for labor and materials related to the approved application. Four, this approval is based upon the criteria in SOL section thirteen oh one B and the following findings. A, based upon the town's review of the sewer flow records, SOL section thirteen oh one D, the town has adequate capacity of the community system and B, the applicant's property is an existing parcel within the Consville Sewer District.
So we need, before we vote, we need a motion and a second. I'll make the motion. Bob makes the motion.
I'll second.
Second from Lori.
Okay. Supervisor Federice?
Aye.
Carl Fancher?
Aye.
Laura Mathais?
Aye.
Judge Isakas?
Yeah.
Uh, Robert Crowman?
Aye.
And Kelly Smith?
Aye.
Okay. I'm sure they'll be very happy. I invited him here to be part of this. He says, I trust you.
He was also sending me, so.
What's that?
That's for my house. He also sent me. He said, thank you.
No problem. So that's the first. It cost a heck of a lot more, uh, well, either way, he paid. He bought it, he leased it, but he bought the second one, which is, was it, he cleared with Lamont to make sure it's meets our specs. So we're good. We're all good. We're in the home stretch here. Oh, I don't like that one. It's Madderkill Stream Assessment, not the Madderkill Forest Update.
Stream Assessment?
Yeah. And what this is all about, every so often, the Green County Soil and Water Conservation District in conjunction with these counterparties in Skahery County, they do an assessment of local waterways. And I think it's been good before I was here, not in at least ten years, probably longer than that, that they did this and they do have some information there. They're gonna do it this summer. They sent a letter out. And they, one of the things they look at more than anything else, but there's others, is invasive species. They're really big on that. What they do about it, I don't know. But they're also looking at stream crossings, bank erosion and large wood, as they call it, meaning, you know, down, down trees and so forth. So people that have property along the Madderkill will be getting a letter. In fact, this is a copy of a letter that they, they sent out. You can't, you can't say you don't want anything to do with it, but why you would, I don't know. I mean, if it's your land, especially if you have bank erosion, sometimes that will make the homeowners or the property owners along the Madderkill eligible for some remediation grants or reziliency and things like that. So.
Madderkill's just, just stream, not side?
No, none of the theaters. We can make, try and make the case, but. Yeah, but there's a picture here of a bunch of Japanese, Napani, which is a real problem, especially along the Madderkill. So anyway, I don't know when that'll come out and this is not just a bunch of folks walking around checking boxes and stuff. They will do a report probably, yep, thick, that has everything you wanted to know and did want to know. So that was more of a heads up than anything else. So that was more of a heads up than anything else. Before we do the next thing, which is an executive session to talk to and interview a candidate for Dogwood, they've been gagged at our present dog control officer, but I found out that the property title was Dog Warden. I don't know. Same thing. She wishes to leave, but she said she would stay on until such time that we could finally replace her, which I very much appreciate. I'm sure you guys do too. So, but before we do that, is there anything somebody on the board here wants to bring up or talk about?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so then I need, what we will probably do, usually I tell people after an executive session, there will be no, no other business conducted. If you want to hang around, you're welcome, but you gotta wait outside. But we probably will vote after we come out of the session to appoint somebody to this position, unless the board feels otherwise. So that being the case, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose, you're always supposed to state the purpose, for, for the purpose of interviewing an applicant for the Dogwood position. You can't shake your head, you gotta say. There we have a second over here. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.